Well, call to order. The August meeting, Public Safety Commission at 5:03 PM. Can we get a roll call?
Ex-official member Woodward.
Here.
Commissioner Gibbs is absent. Commissioner Frost.
Here.
Commissioner Aria.
Present.
Vice Chair Merrick.
Here.
And Chair Spiegel.
Here.
Do you have a call?
Wonderful. Mr. Blake, would you like to do the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Somebody want to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Consensus?
Consensus.
Yes.
All right. Report on the posting.
The agenda was properly posted on July 31st, 2025.
Right on, we have no ceremonial presentations. Let's roll right into item two, written oral communications from the public.
Our first speaker is Dean.
Sorry, I thought I heard James. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you, appreciate it. So, thank you for your time. I recently spoke at the Public Works Meeting. I'm not sure if this is the appropriate forum, but I thought I would give it a go. The subject is about some of the power arcing that goes on with the utility and power poles. So without boring you with me reading some stuff, I submitted stuff late to Susan Duenez. I hope that gets circulated to you, it's got more details in it. Long story short, there seems to be a little bit of history even after the big fire about certain transformers and areas arcing. Owners, neighbors have investigated things, tried to take it up the flagpole, talk to S C E, you know, take a proactive stance towards things. And the feedback, quite honestly, comes quickly, which is good, but the feedback is more that it's tracking. It's normal. And in my own layman's opinion, it's a maintenance issue. People choose to address things after they fail, after there's an issue, instead of proactively maintaining them. I know this issue is bigger than me, probably bigger than everybody in this room, but I surface it to see if there's a better way to get it handled in the future. Obviously, the city and all of us are going through a lot of things. I should have said this when I started. So my address was 20054 on Big Rock Beach, and my house is gone. So this subject's a little sensitive to me, trying to do things better going forward. But as we go forward, we want to make sure that things get handled in a reasonable manner. So we're looking for people to get engaged and see if we can do more about that. Because my own opinion, if things are maintained properly, arcing and tracking, as they call it, does not have to be normal, it does not have to be accepted. We should try to set a no tolerance policy and get these things addressed in a much more proactive way. Another example that I put in the write-up that I gave, obviously, I'm a little biased, but for instance, the power poles, whether you call them power poles or utility poles makes a difference, but the light and going down P C H, they replace timber with timber. Going forward, us owners aren't allowed to put timber under our house. Why is it okay for me to have one five foot out my front door? Right? So we're either going to be fire resilient and take this serious and try to say no fire in the future, or we're going to allow the culture to be the same. I would ask for us all to take a stand to change it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Hans.
Hi. Dean, in the summer of 2017, after a long dry spell, we had 17 pole fires in one weekend, one foggy weekend, because of arcing. And Southern California Edison, at that time, I was working in power pole utility. An activist at the time, I complained, I threatened to file a formal complaint with P U C, and they told me that they would un-retire their fleet of six pole washing trucks that they used to send around with a snorkel on a pole that would wash off the insulators to wash off the accumulated crud. The trucks had been mothballed, and they did take them back out and started running them around town, but obviously, they've stopped doing that. FYI. The reason I put my chit in is I spent the night working on the water line failure that the Waterworks 29 did not tell us about. We got no notifications at all from the county water department. They knew that water line was taken out of service yesterday at 8:00 in the morning and would be down until 5:00 in the afternoon. It was not restored because we're having a problem down at the gas station connecting it. Things like that happen. But at that point, they began to draw down the reservoirs in the tanks. The storage had reached a critical error. They sent out a notification, you may have gotten it, asking us to conserve water. And then at 8:40 last night, somebody at City Hall, and I'm not sure how, but they sent out an email, I'm not sure where they got their information, saying, "Situation is normal and the tanks are filling." At 7:00 in the morning, we were on the air reporting that the situation was over, and people began calling me to say my water has run out. And what happened was, something may have failed in the meanwhile, things like that again happened, but nobody told the public that the water was out. I started checking, City Hall didn't know about it, Matt Myroff learned about it by listening to the radio. I then called the fire department at 8:03 to see if they were staging tanker trucks, tenders in Malibu because there were no hydrants. The answer from Command and Control was, "What water outage?" They had not been notified that the tanks were dry. It was a critical breakdown between Waterworks 29 and L.A. County Fire. And I think the city, I don't think the city was looped in on this accurately at all. And I think it's a very serious problem, particularly after the dry hydrants in Pacific Palisades. Haven't we learned anything? L.A. City Fire was not notified by, or notified the L.A. Public Water Department, Department of Water Power that they had dry hydrants, and nobody followed up on it. And houses were lost in Pacific Palisades because of dry fire hydrants. And we had dry fire hydrants, I think, this morning in Malibu, and nobody did anything about it. And I think you should know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Hans.
Our last speaker is Brian.
I wanted to indicate that, several quick things. The city's own traffic signal at Webway and Civic Center Way has been missing its illuminated signage since, I think, the Franklin Fire. I don't know why we can't order the plastic panels, actually used to do that for the city. We used to put "City of Malibu" underneath the ones on P C H in two-inch letters, so people would know where they were, that they drive along P C H. So that's one. The current water main failure is kind of a deja vu from August, I think it was 20th of 1999, when the city went three days without water. And especially Western Malibu was affected. Everything west of basically Big Rock didn't have water. And there were girls in my building I didn't recognize after three days. That's, you know, they came up to me and said, "Hey, it's Ryan, it's me, Ryan." That's how bad it was. And we had to declare a state of emergency. And the city manager was Dr. Peacock, and he closed the city to tourists. He ordered so for to the C H P and the sheriff, to basically do roadblocks. Dr. Peacock was an amazing city manager, by the way. So the other is that the permit file, I just met with Tyler, for Tranqus Country Mart, was flagged by Joyce Parker and Richard Malika over the years, because they worked on that project together. Richard was just a planner at the time. Was flagged, if there was ever going to be a additional use permit changed to that shopping center on the corner, we were going to get the full P C H right-of-way and fix that right-turn lane so we could have the bicycle lane and everything, that U-turn would work going northwestbound. Apparently, that didn't happen. I have my copy of the file here. So those are a couple of things. And the last is, I did find the P C H bicycle facility study here, which lists a whole bunch of changes to the P C H with fixtures. I know the city hasn't digitized, this is my copy that I edited with all of my notes in it for the final draft, which I don't have. But I think that we should familiarize ourselves with it, because the road hasn't changed a lot. And we need to underground the, well, we need to incorporate the best cellphone service possible along P C H from the city limits into basically Webway. This is our opportunity to do it, incorporate it onto the streetlight poles, which will be about the only thing really of permanence that can accommodate this function. And I'd asked the planning commissioners and indirectly the city council to put out an R F P or hire a company that knows what they're doing to coordinate that. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
All right, let's roll right into staff updates.
All right, a few things for you. So today, we submitted a grant application to CalFire to update our community wildfire protection plan. Hopeful that will get funded. And key things that we're requesting as part of the update is to have it also inventory and map out where all the non-native flammable hazardous trees are in town so that we can be more strategic in working with our partners for dealing with that. Or when we get grant funds for removing hazard trees, we have an idea of what's where. And then also to do kind of a fire risk analysis for Malibu, basically looking based on current fuel loads, what does it look like for the next five years? Where are the areas that are most at risk? What are the likely fire patterns based on fuels now and projecting by years? To also help us be more strategic with how we work with our partners, for branch clients, et cetera. So we're very hopeful that we get good news on that. And I think even if it doesn't get funded, we will do it. We would like to have a good grant to pay for it. But if it doesn't get funded, I'll still probably request to the council to fund that effort. So got that going. We're also working on a hazard mitigation grant. And I'm still waiting while, like, until I apply for a Department of Agriculture grant to do hazard tree removal. That grant still has not been decided, it was due in March. And their website says that they will be announcing later this year. We had been warned that even though the money was safe, because it's federal, you know, Department of Agriculture this year. They said the money is there, but it was going to be slow. But that's still out there, still possible. Our Franklin Fire, Palisades Fire After Action report is in, we have the draft findings. We just started looking at them, so we're kind of at the tail end of this. And I don't remember what the timeline is, when we'll probably finalize it in September.
End of August.
End of August, okay. So we will have, we'll have an internal report, but we'll have a publicly facing one as well. Because sometimes not all recommendations need to share, but we'll have a publicly facing one that will still be used. So that will be coming. Also, we just concluded an R F P protocol, actually, we don't, we have one more interview tomorrow, I'm sorry, for updating our evacuation plan. We want to do a comprehensive update to the evacuation plan. Speak cameras, Monday's council meeting, the council is being asked to adopt the Use Policy and Impact Report, and then once adopted, that will give the green light for Rob's team to get cameras and have those installed. So that's happening with that. And also, at the council meeting on Monday, in case you're interested, we'll probably be presenting an item about various indoor alerting systems, FM Alert, Tom Alert radios, et cetera, just to present to them. I know there's been a strong push to be look at Alarm FM, so that will be part of the discussion on Monday night. I have.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I also have two updates for today. Couple things coming up in the near future. We have our Safety and Evacuation Fair scheduled for September 6th, so we're really working on trying to finalize all aspects of that fair. And then we have the American Red Cross Blood Drive scheduled for September 15th. Here, so we go. And that's all I have.
Good evening. Just two quick things, like Sarah. We're seeing a large uptick in the home wildfire assessments requests, so that's a real positive sign. We still have only reached 10% of the single-family dwellings in Malibu, though. So we're trying to hit that percentage up higher, but we're rolling pretty good right now. The second item is the beacon boxes that you guys are seeing around town. We've had an ongoing problem with the solar-powered light. They were poor design. I've had the vendor replace probably 20 of the 50, and now another 20 are probably out. So by the next meeting, I'll have the exact number. I'm going to run the city next Tuesday night to check all of them and then meet with the vendor. So if you see them, we're aware of it and working on it.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have questions for staff?
Yes.
Go for it.
Susan, I have two questions. So number one, has there been, let's see, has there been a fire risk analysis for the so-called wetland that had like 60-foot-high lanes, what's called the Smith property, right, by Citizen Way?
Not setting up, not specific to that property number.
Are they going to do it?
It would be included as part of the whole C W P P, it would be.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And then, are there any R F Ps for evacuation plans for using the waterways? Anything, like a water taxi?
We're updating the whole plan, and so that could be something that's incorporated as a strategy, but we haven't done it yet, so we're just getting ready to harden to do that.
Yeah, so I got a couple of questions. Gabriel, on the beacon boxes, do you have any data on how much or how often or how many of them were used during the Palisades Fire?
As far as I know, Brian, one was used during the Bluffs Fire. And I opened two of them during the Palisades Fire, offered them to strike teams coming in. They chose to not use them, I just showed it to them, said, "Hey, this is what we got, if you're interested." They chose to go with what they had. That's what I know. The vendor seems to think that there were other ones used, but I'll learn more.
I just want to know, I mean, this was a big event, so, and those things were in place, so let's see if they were being used or not.
Yeah.
The other question goes back to public comment with Hans. Do we, what are we going to do to try and figure out this sort of communication with these other agencies that seem to be, it's not really for you, necessarily, but when the city doesn't know that residents don't have water or that they're going to be out of water and the fire department doesn't know, we need to, we do need to figure out a way in which everybody communicates that issue. Now, I don't know who knew what, you know? Did Caltrans break the pipe and not tell anybody? Nobody knows. So is there going to be some kind of research into that to see what, why that happened? And if it does happen again, that we'll be better prepared for something like that? Because I do know that a lot of people all of a sudden were like out of water this morning when they woke up.
Yeah, it seemed to be a pretty big communication failure. I wasn't like directly, but I was CC'd on a million emails that were coming between all sorts of different people, including the supervisor's office. Rob, I'm sure, had emails that I was not on. I'm sure this could be simple if I had that communication. I'm pretty sure that Sophia Sedani from Supervisor's Office Office, I'm sure is going to have a conversation with the water district, because she was top of heart and received a lot of calls on that as well. So I don't know exactly what all is happening right now, but we're all busy, he might know.
Where is our Public Works?
I don't know, I saw him peek in and then he ran away.
He was in the hallway, maybe.
We're not important enough.
Okay, and that's it.
Chris?
I don't have any questions, but are we doing commissioner comments as the question?
We will.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah, I think on utilities, I would echo what you're saying.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, both power and water, critically, lifeline utilities and communications. And boy, it'd be great within Malibu, so that those utility providers provide you with a regular update. Maybe it's once a month, a meeting with Water District 29 and Los Feliz Water District. Because there's cut-over points between Los Feliz and Water District 29, so you might know, could you open or consider opening the cut-over so that you can provide 29 with water? They did that in the fire. So what was going on here, what were the conversations? I just think they owe it back to you, you know, to keep the city informed of the impact. Same thing with S C E, same thing with the, you know, phone carriers and so forth. Maybe some kind of director status maybe might be helpful. So that they feel they have a certain obligation to keep the city of Malibu aware of what's going on.
And then, so I just want to follow up real quick on that. Did, are you putting out, has the city put out any kind of warnings about, you know, the fact that the water now needs to be boiled?
Oh, yeah, there's lots and lots of messages.
You just got that?
1:15. 4:45.
I don't think I've asked.
There was a lot of back and forth, conflicting information. I mean, I just sort of briefly, because it was a lot about.
Gotcha.
I was aware that it seemed discussed, and then I'd see messages come over my phone.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you.
No, I'm with you guys, just saying, more information, better.
I have some comments, but we probably trust them in commissioner comments. Do you have additional comments?
I have commission comments.
Sure?
Yes.
Of course.
So I would like to dedicate today's Public Safety Commission meeting to the three detectives that we lost with L A S D at the incident at the L A S D's Biscaylu Center Training Academy. Detective, they're all these incredibly brilliant, Detective Joshua Kelly Eklund, Detective Victor Leemis, Detective William Osborn. If you could dedicate this meeting to their memory and their service. And I have some comments, some complaints about Malibu residents attending a city council meeting for having their faces and license plates photographed by, I mean, and they were not very happy about it. Then I was wondering if there's a way where we have evacuation zones. Let's say C 11 is from the west end of Topanga Beach Road, Beach Road, all the way up to like 225, 22258 P C H. I was wondering if we could have exact addresses for residents to have a reference? Because I, you know, you know how I want to study everything. So I did, and like, well, it would be exactly maybe that address and then 2258 to, for example, all the way to the west, the 112 will be all the way to the west end of Malibu Road. Then from 113 will be from the west end of Malibu Road to somewhere like 6463 Surfside Way. And then 14 will be from there to 34685 P C H. I was wondering if that's feasible to make it easy for residents to understand evacuation zones? And also, I was wondering if there could be very simple resident-to-resident videos made? One for adults, you know, adults sharing, and even one children doing a video of some. Like the fire safety email that you guys sent yesterday was amazing, was really good. You know, was comprehensive. If a child could have a video, just do the basics for other children and also an adult doing it, a comprehensive one overall. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris?
Just a couple of things. Dean, pizza cut? I was in the meeting earlier.
You remember well.
Yeah. I thought your area down there was being undergrounded.
There's still poles. Still, still the light poles are there.
Oh, the light poles, okay. And they're not going to be concrete?
People, people, well, the misnomer is that the poles are still up because of communication lines, which is what the majority of what's hung on them. But they're carrying the lights for P C H. And then the power comes across from the bluff side, so there's even lines that run across the highway at a higher elevation. But right now, there's no plan whatsoever to remove those power poles. It actually came up in the Caltrans discussion at the Public Works Meeting, and the Caltrans person made the statement as, "Well, if people want to change them, who's going to pay for them?" So there's no, there's no plan as far as I know.
Yeah, a couple of different things. One of them might be of interest with the brigade. We're going to be conducting a study, we're combining some support from Cal State Long Beach, USC Salt Price School, by UCLA and UC Berkeley, in taking a look at the Malibu area as far as societal change of attitude when it regards to risk.
Thank you.
So one of the objectives of the brigade is to be able to measure the performance. And measuring it includes societal change and societal acceptance. So we're trying to look and see if we can determine, are we moving the needle after the last two fires to see, are people, have their attitudes changed? Are they willing to say, "Hey, we need to accept and own more mitigation responsibilities"? What is going on and how are people reacting? It will take a little while to do this, lots of interviews and lots of analysis, but it will meet very strict academic standards. And it's something that will be published, should be available before the end of the year. And I think it might be of mutual interest to have that type of an analysis to see how things are going ahead. Other than we're doing, trying to make some headway with S M M C to semi economic insurgency and trying to go after a potential grant there and some other funding. You can also tell you've been with Chief Smith the last few days and with Chief Maroni as well, continuing to get a lot of support and help from L.A. County Fire, they've been phenomenal and continue to be so. And I know, Gabriel, it's great to talk to you today. I can't say enough about how good a job Gabriel and his folks are doing. And the more home assessments we can do, the better. And then we're also trying to find ways to help people on the rebuilding side to have free assessments of their landscape plans through combination of A I and architectural expertise to analyze options that they may want to take if they want to become more resilient and do it. So that's it.
I have one other thing.
Hit us with it.
Hit us with it. Ryan's talking about the right-turn lane at Tranqus. That's going to be approved any day now. So that's the latest from Rob about that. So that's pretty important. Ryan?
Good job. He's memorizing the agenda, I know.
It's important for you.
That's my.
Ryan, you did a good job.
Yeah, I heard that.
Pardon me?
Is it 100 feet of right-of-way? Is it the max?
It's a right-turn lane going into Tranqus as soon as the bridge is complete. That's all I'm going to say about it.
They narrowed the media.
All right. I want to talk about the evacuation plan. Plans in general are only as good as your ability to execute those plans, right? When the power goes out, that's when, when we're going to evacuate, very likely the power is going to be out. We don't have traffic lights. And without our ability to have those traffic lights, what is our, what is our plan going to do? It's going to evaporate. We need, I spoke at the city council meeting maybe three weeks ago and implored them to put pressure and keep pressure on Caltrans to keep coming out and testing the battery backups. That's step one. Step two is to allow the city to stage generators here in advance of the red flag events and any P S Ps that may come. That way, we can have these generators running within the hour, whether it's, I don't care who does it. If those generators are running and lights are on. So that is, to me, a big deal. So I'm going to keep bringing it up and bringing it up and bringing it up until we get this fixed. So I do believe that, I wish Rob was here to work his magic with Caltrans.
Again, I mean, I did hear from Tatiana at our department head meeting that they're looking at a battery, but I think she said for the last three days, which is pretty good, like a better battery. So they're looking at it, is the bottom line, if I may help. May not be three days, I just remember.
Cool, give me three hours, you know, reliably, and we'll get those, we'll get those lights on with the generators.
Yeah.
You know, three days, great. You know, three days, great, but give me three hours to start.
So they are looking at that, they're looking at different batteries to report to last long.
Great, that's, that's awesome. Chris already covered the right-hand turn lane. How would residents report, like what's the, the arcing transformer boxes? Arcing transformers, they call the city, who, who are they calling? Are they? Just straight.
That's the first call is 911, yeah.
911 and then Edison?
Yeah.
Okay. Because every time it gets super foggy, I'm like, bird view, I know that there's one that's, that's, that's pretty pissed off. So.
An angry pole.
Yeah. Okay, Rob called me today, let me know that Zuma Undercrossing will be open Friday. So that's, that's cool in advance. It's going to be a big, it's going to be a big weekend down there. So hopefully Caltrans sticks to their guns and opens it up for everybody. Other than that, I don't have anything. That's good news. That's great news. Let's, let's keep it rolling.
Next question.
Of course.
So Brent, has the Brigade have, have had a after-action report or evaluation yet?
Yeah, we do, we did an internal after-action report that we have. And we can do a lot of that with the fire department per se.
That's fantastic.
Chief Maroni and Chief Smith are very aware.
That's fantastic. And then are we, are we having store options for traffic lights when we have fires?
That would be a wild question.
And then are, are we going to have cellphone service the next time there's a fire? You're not a genie, you can't predict the future.
I cannot answer that question. I mean, I would love to be able to answer, but I can't.
That's all right.
Sure answer is no. Don't rely on that. All right, nothing else, we're going to move through the consent calendar. Let's pull, pull the only item on here, the approval of minutes from September 4th and December 4th. Last year.
I was a little bit behind between the, the staffing change and then a bunch of fires. So we apologize for all these late minutes.
Right, I can't remember what was said. So how, how can I?
So I think the best, I mean, what I do is I just look at it and like, does that sound like something of it has said? Is it accurate? Like, the vice may state a fact if it was accurate or not accurate.
It's pretty thick.
Yep. Well, okay, I do it, I'll search my name because I'll get it in words.
Audio recording.
You can look at it electronically, can't I?
I have audio recordings that I can provide.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you like to bring these back at a future date?
Let's see how the vote goes. I'm, so we can, we can take a vote. So however you guys want to go, want to do it. Ready to vote?
Motion?
Chris makes a motion. Do I have a second?
What's the motion?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Well, she's not in here.
Yeah, so it was before my term. It's you three, it's before my term.
I'm just looking, I remember saying some of this, so. This was during fire, man, so it's like.
Yeah.
Another world, another life.
Um, I, I will second that.
Yep.
Do you like a roll call?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Gibbs is absent. Commissioner Frost?
Yes.
Commissioner Arya?
It was before my term, so I'm like.
You can abstain. So you can abstain.
You can abstain or what, or say yes.
Yes.
Vice Chair Merrick?
Yes.
Chair Spiegel?
I'm going to abstain.
All right, motion carries.
He's like, I can't, I can't remember.
Can you change my to abstain?
Yeah, but she wasn't on the commission.
I wasn't, it was before my term. Can you change my to abstain?
Vote on minutes.
You can if, if you had listened and understood the body of it.
I don't think you can.
Can you change my to abstain?
I guess it just has to come back up in another meeting.
I would like the audio just to.
So we'll do the roll call again. Uh, same motion, motion to approve by Chair Frost and second by Merrick.
You know what, excuse me.
We might be able to give like a word version, then they can just search his name. Would that help?
With what?
Like if you have a word version and it just searched your name, would that help you?
I, no, I, I read through it. Um, I went through it, but I just like don't remember what was going on.
If you had, you have a valid point, I'd like to, I'd like to pull the motion.
Can we just re-adjandise this and if you could send us?
Pull it next time.
The audio, that would be.
So just to keep my record clean, let's have a motion to bring back at a future dated time.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Sorry it'll be difficult.
Second.
I just, I'll second, I'll second.
Bring back. Do we have a consensus on that?
Yes.
All right.
All right. Let's move on to old business, private security for fire impacted neighborhoods.
All right. So at the June 23rd city council meeting, they approved and planning the extension for recovered six. And they wanted the Public Safety Commission to do a 60-day review. 60 days being August 20th, and if we are meeting on the 20th, be required to this meeting for your review. And as we saw, we attached all of the weekly reports that were relevant for the time period. And hopefully had a chance to look at those. I mean, overall, I remember at every single word, but it, it seems like there's a lot of activity in the neighborhood that they're catching. There are going to be questions, comments, thoughts.
Uh, where did the, what, what happens with all this information that they have? Does the city have access to all of it?
The reports.
Well, I mean, they're taking license plates, they're doing all that group stuff. Does the city get that info? Or does they?
We can.
If you request it, okay. Because I mean, they're blacking out stuff.
Right, because it's, it's, it's redacted because we can't publicly put that out there. Yeah.
But if, if, if these guys over there needed it?
Hundred percent.
It wouldn't be redacted?
Not, yeah.
All right.
Ryan?
Ryan, should we take public comment before?
Yeah, so she already finished her presentation, Susan, anything else?
So last question later?
After. Ryan?
I read through.
So hold on just one second, sorry. Did you, you finished your presentation? Okay, thank you, Susan. Ryan, can you, can you step up so there's a recorder up here? So we can hear your comment. Thank you, Ryan, appreciate that.
Read through a lot of it, I scanned all of it, read most of it. Um, there's about three or four takeaways from it. And that is that this is a contractor of the city. And so I'm, just because they have insurance doesn't mean it's not going to fall back on the city if something really bad happens. And being a contractor, I think these reports are probably publicly available to the city. I don't think you can shield it that way. Uh, the second is, it appeared several of the approaches to people who were in the area lacked any nexus, that we're not going to stop an ID state, so to speak. And in the self-description, there's a lot of very gratuitous, uh, patting on the back in the language in there. And it did say that, um, two of the people who were approached fell down, were injured and had to go get medical treatment after being approached by the security patrol. Um, I find that a little bit concerning. Um, we have the one-way report from the security folks who were there. But there's also reference to body worn cameras, which were only manually activated at certain times. And so again, the idea of people being approached who may have every right to be on a public street is a little concerning. There was also a report of interfacing with, um, residents on a private street. It's the one up at the western end of Rambla Pacifico, I can't pick, Estera, something? Is that the right name? That, that isn't a city street. And I, I had a question of whether or not that fit into the scope of the work of the city if they're to be patrolling private neighborhoods, which might or might not even be in the burn area. Exactly. I understand the residents are going to love the program, it's great, it's cost $9,000 a day. Um, and it's just going on and on and on. Um, and there were some questions about how, how widely vetted and how the contractor was chosen. So I think this needs to be a phase-down, phase-out approach of this commission to figure out what's the most effective way. And knowing that the price of 9,000 for four guys driving around, is that the best value in the mix? And I, I know that generally you're not here to consider pricing. But to maximize the scope of the program, there's no other way. So if the other contractors would have bid six guys for that price, or if they would only charge three-quarters as much, the same amount of patrol, it's something of value. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
So Susan, um, I've been checking on, the camera was supposed to be at Big Rock. At the bottom of Big Rock, it's not there.
Yeah, there's a mobile camera. I don't know when it was moved, I, I don't have right now.
Yeah, because I had seen it, like I, I remember I showed some of, some of, I think I may even, even showed you a video. I showed, I saw one two years ago in Beverly Hills and I said, well, that's such a great idea. And, um, but the gentleman, I think, he said that he had a patent on it, right? Is that what he claimed?
I don't know.
Okay, and then also, um, cover six, I think according to their RFP, they're charging about $500,000 more than the other two, two other RFPs, right?
Um, I, off the top of my head, it was more expensive. I'm trying to remember, like.
Well, you don't remember every single detail or every single.
I'm looking at my brain, I see the picture of her, this fresh season there. Yeah, it was more than, it wasn't the most expensive RFP, but it was one of the more expensive ones. Yeah.
Yeah, it's quite expensive. And I'm just hoping the city will be okay. Now, they're asking a lot of money for something that is quite basic, what they're doing. Um, and again, the technology, let's see it, let's see it. The technology aspect wasn't as, like the Jackson, Jackson's cartoon, as it was protect, you know, it's just people, and like Ryan said, um, the body cam was not always on. It would be at some occasions and, um, so if, if we're supposed to vote for it today, um, Josh, I don't know, because, um, I have a lot more, a lot more research to do on cover six. I have been asking residents and I've been telling them they see them, so that's more positive. But I have to do so much more research, so it's up to the other commissioners to see.
Chris?
What do you guys, go ahead.
Uh, all right. You want me to? Sure, okay. Um, so I'm looking at the weekly statistics, these, these weekly statistics. And, um, you know, the resident requested property checks. Those, those numbers seem to increase over time. They started off around 1,100, they're up to 2,100. How, how are they logging that? Does, do, do we have the ability to say, well, which one of these? I mean, 2,174, that's a lot more properties than, than are in Big Rock. I mean, you know, granted, it's a bigger area, okay, but, but, um, so like, are these just like, when you buy an ad with Google and it's like clicks? You know, like it does, you know, is this something we don't have any clue about? I mean, because that's the biggest metric that's changing in all this. And if there truly are residents that, if there's that many residents that are requesting these property checks, then I'm okay with, with them doing that. I just don't want to get into a situation where nobody's really checking on who these 20, like do we know who these 2,174 people are?
We, uh, based on my conversation with Mike Grant, because I asked him about this. But I took away from our conversation that, that doesn't mean it's that many properties. It means residents who have asked, could you regularly check on my property? So it could be more than one check on a single property. So there could be maybe, say, 200 homes, but checking it two or three times a day or something like that. I'd have to ask Mike specifically that they do have a log of something.
Okay, yeah, I mean, just because that's the metric that's changing the most. I mean, it seems like they're kind of getting two people and then sometimes they get nobody during the week, but they get like two people that are trespassing. I mean, those are the bad guys in my opinion. Um, then they're going and talking to contractors and whatnot, okay, fine, they're just, you know, contacts, that's, that's okay. But this one number is just so big.
Right, and that's why I asked.
And, and like if the residents are doing that, that's fine, I, I'm, I'm all for that. But I just, that number just seems so big that I don't know where it's coming from.
I'll have to ask him, um, my impression again is that that is maybe even a couple of checks throughout. I mean, probably more than that here, because you need to check it regularly.
Right.
And that may even be where somebody was seen on a street that's maybe private. Maybe it's because they requested that they go and check on that property.
Yeah, because, you know, June, in June, there were 900 requested checks and in July, there were 2,100.
Because as more and more residents like get contacted, because they do, they're friendly, they're out there talking to people. And you'd be amazed, they still occasionally come across a resident who they haven't talked to before, you know? And then once they know, they're saying, oh, can you check on my property when you're doing your rounds? And so I think that's why your number is going up, but I, I can verify with Mike.
Yeah, just because otherwise, you know, it's pretty static. And so then the question would be, all right, so are we, what's the city paying for? We're paying for a couple trespassers a week, you know, it's like, mm. And I'm sure that the people who lost their property would be, um, would be happy to know that they're doing that. But I just don't know if that's the most cost-effective way to do it.
Are they open to negotiating down the $9,000 a day to a little bit less? And are we allowed legally to see how much the founder gets, the owner of the business gets? And how much, like, I just want to make sure I deter any attitude of profiteering. Say, oh, it's Malibu, let's overcharge them. I mean, I'm sure they're not doing it, but I would like to deter that, do not cause attitude toward Malibu.
Yeah, I'm pretty confident they're not. From what I understand, they've been giving us a lot of copies.
You mean the drones?
Yeah, there's things in here that they've just done because they, they were hoping to make a good impression for future contracts. And obviously, New England is worried to do that. So I think we're getting our money's worth. I mean, that's my impression, I could be wrong, but that's my impression. Um, and I'm not so sure if the council is looking necessarily for you to say, continue it, don't continue it. I mean, perhaps, they didn't really give a question on what they wanted, they just had to do a review. Probably more towards like accountability. So they know that you're doing a review, so they know that we're looking at this about the right time.
Questions for you?
Um, and so, uh, has the, has anybody gotten any feedback from the people that are actually benefiting from this? Like are the residents, they, they're, they're?
They're very happy.
They're happy, yeah, I have too, I've talked to.
I've asked and they said they've seen them.
Okay.
That's good. Yeah, that is a huge number. And, you know, that could also have to do with the time of year, summer, more people in the area, driving around. I've seen them a lot all over the hills, they, they move around quite a bit. And the people who I have talked to are very happy with them.
Yeah, we've heard that.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't you? But, but here's, here's the other take on this, is that, you know, the majority of those homes, I don't say the majority, maybe 75% have been cleaned up now. The sites have been cleaned up. There's nothing really there that is going to interest people. Maybe trespassers just want to trespass or whatever, say they've been there. It's the people that are living there that are really getting the benefit of it now. You know, a trespasser, somebody weird in the neighborhood.
Right, although there's been cases of illegal dumping, so they're helping us to prevent that.
That's true. Do they interact much with that lost hills?
They do as needed, Chris walked away, I don't know.
Because they were explaining that they have the same arrest power that you and I have. They just do private citizen arrests.
Yeah, and they publish sheriff, so they'll, you know, keep the person there until sheriff arrives. And I know that's happened at least one time.
So are you, so we're not making a recommendation, or we are?
You can, they were not specific, the council direction was just that the commission evaluate the contract at sixty days.
For the ninety days?
For ninety, yeah, at sixty day mark for the ninety day.
Can you repeat that? What did you just say? You were evaluating them at the sixty day mark for a ninety day extension?
Well, it's a ninety day extension, and the direction was to have the commission review the contract at sixty days, just to kind of, as a monitoring kind of thing.
Right.
It's sixty days since, was it May twenty-first, when they started?
Right, so sixty days to be August twentieth, so it's way in the middle between your two commission meetings, so I figured, let's do it this meeting, just in case you had a recommendation that I needed to take into account. Otherwise, I wouldn't have had time, right, so I chose this date.
Cuz they started May twenty-first, that's their date.
Did you tell, did you say earlier on, in one of the other meetings, that they had a hard, a hard stop at sixty, that they wouldn't go below sixty days, or ninety, excuse me, ninety days? And that's still the case?
I don't know, I mean, it's, the council, it seemed as though they weren't interested in going beyond ninety days. I mean, they had a hard time even in that, cuz of the expense, but.
But wasn't Cover Six that had a minimum? That's what I was.
Yeah, I mean, they don't do short-term contracts. They basically decided to just help us out, I mean, this is what they said to me, that they were, this is probably one of their only short-term contracts, cuz they normally don't do that.
So would they consider sixty days a short-term contract?
Yes.
Because it's part of an extension.
The problem with the short-term contract is that now, you can't hire people for a short-term contract, not quality people, cuz there's a lot of training and vetting involved. So what happens with a short-term contract is you have to pull from your other contracts, which really could mess you up. So that's why long-term contracts work, cuz they, in their mind, they wanna run a quality business with highly trained people. So you don't just pull any old person off the street, give them a, you know, two-day training and, you know. Like, some security companies is pretty basic, and you, they can do that, but that's not what Cover Six does.
Sure, my attitude on that, that's their problem. Get quality people out here, we're not gonna tell them how to do their job, we're paying for a service, they provide a circus, end of story. Now, my feedback is, is this. Part of this recovery here in Malibu is not just to get people back here, it's to get people to stay here. And part of that is, what makes Malibu so awesome? We're telling people Malibu's safe, we have great schools, we have great parks, we have all these things, come to Malibu, be in Malibu. Now, as far, you know, I've read through this, I went through a lot of the numbers, one of the things that you, it's really hard to quantify, is the deterrent factor, right? If you have like a security guard at a jewelry store, it's not like, hey, how many robbers have you caught this month?
Yeah, it's hard to measure prevention.
So that, that's one of my big things, and I, when I was reading through this, prior to the meeting, I was just like, you know, this is a professional report, you know, this, this is good. And it seems to me like they are doing a really good job. And I take the money out, which I'm doing my best to kind of ignore, which is something that, you know, thankfully, I don't have to make that decision on where to spend the money. I do think that they're doing, that they're doing a good job, we're getting what we're, we're paying for. And I think we let the city council decide what they wanna do. But, you know, I am in agreement with one of Ryan's comments, that eventually, you know, I don't know if it's next week or sixty weeks from now, we are gonna have to ramp down. We can't, can't keep going, millions and millions of dollars every, every year on this, so. You know, because the reality here is, is it going to take ten years to rebuild Malibu, twenty years, thirty years? I, I don't know, but it's, it's not gonna be a year from now, we do know that. So I do like the service that they're providing.
Is there, is there different levels of service that they can provide?
Yes.
Certainly, yeah, I mean, we could, and that's even like a different kind of proposal, I mean, we could, like, the council could decide, we're willing to spend X amount for security, and then we go out for another proposal, like, we have this much money, what can we give us, right? And then rate companies that way too, on qualifications, and then what we can get for that price, that's always possible as well. Or we can ask them, we have this much money, what can we get with that, if we're not satisfied with that, we can buy that. I mean, there's various ways to do it, but you can set a budget, and just so you can look at it.
I mean, if it's, you know, they're charging the city quarter million dollars a month, right? So is there any way we can see their cost? Cuz I just feel like it's a little inflated, I don't know.
That's not our job, that's not what we do here, yeah, it's, it's, are they, are they doing a good job? Is this necessary? Okay, city council, they're in charge, they get to decide where the, where the money goes and how it's spent. I mean, it's a little bit above our pay grade to sit here and try and audit.
Can we recommend that they lower the fee that they're asking?
We don't do numbers.
Yeah, this is.
We don't do numbers.
I mean, one.
Just public.
Thought that, remember, I mean, one option I heard is that you could just go to it, like, camera system, cuz they do that in some places, where they put cameras, whatever, in the neighborhood, and they do remote monitoring, and then they would just call sheriff, it's basically, just like any other security company, company that does remote monitoring through camera systems. So that could be a possibility, a lot less expensive, I would imagine, but.
Yeah, again, I like the, I like the personal touch. I like that there's somebody in the neighborhood who recognizes residents, and will go and reach out and make contact with somebody, that's, you know, I know that when there's somebody in my neighborhood rolling around, you know, I go talk to them, hey, are you new here, you know, whatever? I'd like to know everybody who's in my neighborhood, and I think that that's beneficial for this neighborhood, because there's nobody there.
Their public relations has been excellent out there. Everybody knows who they are, they call them out, they know my first name. And, you know, there's a benefit to the people that, it's not so much the people that aren't there now, and you just got a good point here, that how long can it take to rebuild, this can't go on forever. But the people that are living there now feel a lot more comfortable, because they don't have all the neighbors. So the houses that are still standing, right now, they feel comfortable that Cover Six hasn't covered.
Cuz there's no community, you know? There's strength in numbers with your neighbors and the community, so, but, you know, the flip side of that coin is, Ryan's a hundred percent right, we do, we will have to ramp this down at a certain point, this is, can't maintain this forever, so what is that going to look like? And, and we'll go from there, but my attitude here, I think we've been asked, like, are they doing a good job? Yes, I think, I think that they are.
Let's let the city council. We want to extend them for another ninety days, that's the question.
No, I don't, I wanna, I wanna extend them for another sixty days. I don't want them getting comfortable, I don't want them getting complacent. My recommendation would be to extend them another sixty days, and we'll be.
After the ninety day, after September.
After August twentieth, this is the sixty day.
Yeah, we have a run of ninety, yeah.
Right. Right, so that would extend, that would extend them through the new year, through, through the holidays? The sixty days.
Sixty.
Sixty days, sixty days beyond the ninety. The ninety is up in September.
Yes.
October, November.
August twentieth.
That's, I think that's plenty. Sixty, you know, top of the ninety.
Yeah, let's keep an eye on them, this is, this is a huge expense, they can come back, and I'm surprised they're not here.
Well, he asked me, he wasn't sure if he should be here, no, I wasn't sure either, but if he wouldn't be able to speak as freely in front of him, or, you know, he wasn't really sure, he was trying to be sensitive.
We're not too shy, Susan.
I know, but sometimes it can be taken two ways, when the vendor's there, as opposed to not there.
Promotional.
Right, he wanted, he needs to be able to just speak and say whatever he wants, without, I don't know.
Fair, but, yeah, I recommend that.
Motion?
So you mean sixty days plus ninety, ninety and then sixty days?
The sixty's are tough.
Well, I wanna be very clear, the ninety's almost up? And then, when does the, when does the ninety actually end?
September nineteenth.
September nineteenth, so, I want. Is he upset?
No.
Oh, okay.
Just crashed into it.
Control your guys, you know.
Dramatic.
So that was, that takes us to mid-November. I think that in our November meeting, this needs, this needs to come back. If that's what the council wants us to review it again for the sixty days, and make a recommendation to them, but my recommendation would be, let's give them sixty on top of, their contract goes up in September seventeenth, that's what you said?
I think it's the nineteenth.
Nineteenth, okay, so, my recommendation would be, extend them at their current level of staffing for sixty days, but I wanna hear from, from them at our November meeting. Or their October meeting would be even better.
Or if you want them to come back next month, you know, if you wanna hear sooner, to answer some of the questions we've had.
Yeah, fight for their jobs.
But there's something I need help with right now. So the sixty day, they started on May twenty, twentieth, the sixty day, no, May twenty-first, the sixty day that we approved, or we recommended, not approved, recommended, ends on July twenty, twentieth.
No, August twentieth.
I'm sorry, August twentieth, thank you for having a brain. So, so we're just recommending whether thirty days from July, August twentieth. So that would be October twentieth. No, I'm sorry, no, but, okay, I got it now, I got it.
Up to the end of the current contract.
My drain is, yeah, coming back, okay.
Do you have a motion?
Yep, that's, my, my motion is to recommend to the council, hey, listen, like, we wanna, how do I say this?
Conservative.
Our recommendation is.
Our recommendation is to maintain the current level of staffing with, with Cover Six for an additional sixty days.
That's it?
Period. I would like them to come back, to come here, and, but that's not part of my motion, but I'm telling you.
I can come back next time, yeah, I mean, we weren't sure, you know, it's way to go, so I apologize.
Can I make a friendly amendment to that motion?
Absolutely, you can.
So my, my friendly amendment would be that we would ask the city council to investigate different levels of service that may be more financially feasible.
Good.
They may turn that back.
That's being good.
Yeah, right, yeah, that's.
Put it on them.
Well, actually, it could be to have the commission explore other things that you could.
Or to see different levels of service that they might provide, because, like John says, you gotta wind it down.
Right, cuz I'm not gonna sit here and say, hey, we need, we can get rid of this, this, and this, right now, I don't have that stuff in front of me. So the, the spirit of this is, we're gonna extend it another sixty days in preparation for us to understand what we can trim. So I think in November, or whatever it is.
October.
Or October, we can, we can meet with them, and we can understand, okay, we can make another recommendation to council, because that sixty days goes like that, so.
Chair, did you approve the friendly amendment?
Yes.
Do we have a second for the motion?
A second.
Thanks for keeping us on.
So that's extending another sixty days, and that explore other options.
Not other options, just levels.
Other levels of service.
Levels of service that are financially feasible.
More financially.
Are we allowed to be privy to that as well, or no, just the council?
Or, say that again, explore, what's the matter?
So where are you?
Those different levels of service, other levels of service.
Be good.
Are we allowed to be privy to the understanding of different levels of service, or is it just council?
They're gonna, they're gonna take it back to us, very likely.
Do we have a consensus on the motion?
Yes.
Yes, we have so.
Motion carries, gives absent?
Alexis, you ready to do it?
Yes, yes, thank you.
That's a good job.
Alright. Alright.
Thank you.
Title wave, advisor, tsunami.
Yes, that was fun.
It's my biggest fear from twenty-two years here.
Of course, they come at five thirty as everybody's walking at the door, so. Anyways, yeah, I mean, since you know, you know, one of your assignments is to review how we react to things, and I thought it was a good opportunity to either let you know or refresh your memory on how this all works. So, you know, we got the initial notice from Chris Soderling calls, so usually it's gonna be Watts Clan, or Chris, or somebody calling us, as soon as they get notified by the tsunami warning center, they call us. And pretty shortly after that, we started.
It goes to the sheriff's department?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt you, not, okay.
Because law enforcement is in charge of evacuation, so that's why it goes straight to law enforcement first.
Okay.
And then after that, shortly after, we started getting all the other messages, straight from the warning center, from, you know, Halloweys, and from the operational center, which is LA County. And then six thirty was the, six thirty was the first, like, coordination call we had, and then after that, it got into a rhythm of every hour on the hour. And that's basically based on the fact of the buoys that are out in the ocean, as the wave travels, it gives more and more data. So in each hour, they have more and more data to be able to predict impacts on land, you know, wave amplitude, et cetera. And really be able to define more the areas that are at highest risk. So Sarah and I were on those calls every hour till about ten eight, ten PM, when it was pretty clear that there was going to be no danger to Malibu, no different than a king tide or high tide. And then it was, it was all good, but, you know, so that's how it went, and luckily.
So is it each individual's agency's determination now to handle it? Because Beaches and Harbors kept the beaches closed for a full day after.
Well, that was a really good exercise for them. I called them, I called them, and they thought it was the lifeguard's responsibility to close the beaches. So then I reached out to fire, I didn't hear back from them, but then pretty soon I did get a message from Beaches and Harbors that they were closing. So they had to work through their systems with that.
So again, we don't seem to have any kind of, on any of these things, a real decent unified system where all the agencies are on the same page, whether it was water.
I mean, I feel like that coordination comes in waves, so you could really coordinate everybody, you get together, they talk, and then you have turnover, and then these new people come in, they don't know. I, I've seen this throughout my career, I'm a brand, I've witnessed this as well, that it's a wave, I mean, sometimes it works really well, and so this was actually a really good exercise, and these and Harbors agreed, cuz it really made them, you know, pull out the book, like, what are we supposed to do? You know, cuz I guess they've had some changes, and, you know, so it's good. But, I mean, fortunately, in Malibu, the tsunami hazard risk is not really a big deal. I mean, the area that's most at risk is really Malibu Lagoon, and the Colony area is probably the highest risk, for in terms of homes.
Do you think?
Wait, just hold on, sorry, are you, are you, are you done with your presentations? Do we have a public comment?
We do not have any.
Okay, wonderful, carry on, sorry.
So when, when they're, when, when I was getting these tsunami warnings or whatever, I wasn't that worried, cuz I'm on the blessed point, came up above. But do you think that, since it's not really all Malibu that's affected, it's really a smaller area, do you think that maybe the city can do some sort of outreach to sort of let people know? Because I'm kinda looking at it, and, oh yeah, that makes sense, yeah, like Bonzol and Malibu Lagoon, Colony, those guys are in trouble. Of course, every beach house is, but do you think that maybe there's a, something that, or, or with our warnings, that maybe we send out, we send out this map that I'm looking at?
Yeah, I mean, we've done some tsunami outreach in the past. We've happened in the last two years, I mean, the last time we did a big push on tsunami, we get two people show up. But, and we, we did an online.
I don't think it's something, I think if it was a postcard or something like, know where you're.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good idea, especially for, like, the areas that are mapped out as risk, like, Mount Colony, for sure. I mean, those homes could be severely inundated, if we had the maximum surge that's predicted, it would not be a good day.
It might even get as close as the front door here.
And, and I also think, well, and this isn't homes, the other hazard I worry too is if it happens during the day, on a quiet beach day, you could have a lot of people impacted on the beaches, running into the parking lots, you know, that could be.
Traffic, the miles.
Yeah, and if the water goes into the parking lots, the cars start moving around, it could be, it could be, it could be a bad day. You know, so that's gonna be like, you know, the Japanese tsunami that we saw, you know, years ago, but it could still be a pretty bad day at Malibu, we had the maximum inundation.
Do we have a critical fault that could create a tsunami rapidly?
It's mostly the, the Aleutian Islands of. Oh, yeah, it's mostly the, the Aleutian Islands of, of Washington State, Cascadia.
Oh, so we're only, yeah, Cascadia fault, sure, but then we're still gonna have like four hours notice.
We'll have like probably five hours.
Is that, is that really critical though, like, really?
Problem is, it's the length of the fault. And to actually have it like when we had the Indian Ocean tsunami, the, the shift was over several hundred miles. And it was a subduction fault, it has to be huge, that's what this was too, a subduction fault, one goes under the other.
Sure.
Lucy John was working on this kind of stuff with her. We really don't have anything that would be that severe here. What would affect us in Southern California is the ports. And what happens is the storms, the surge will take these huge tankers.
Bash, bash everything, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's the biggest exposure we have, is the port of LA, port of Long Beach, and all the container ships and oil ships. They're just gonna smash, they'll rip off their moorings, and, and they're just gonna go batter on. Ports are not designed to handle that. Tsunami, I, I probably don't remember who's actually been in or responded to a large tsunami. So I don't like to, to include the Indian Ocean tsunami. My experience was, it's really bad. When I got there, the next day, first thing I knew was barely seventeen thousand people.
Wow, you're talking about Boxing Day on two thousand four? But were you in Fukushima in two thousand eleven? Or you went March of two thousand eleven?
But Fukushima was not as bad as the Boxing Day is, as the, the three countries that were affected there, especially Palatia in Indonesia, two hundred thousand dead.
Wow.
We got there.
So here in Malibu, though, I mean, our biggest threats, we'll, we'll have about four or five hours of warning, which is sufficient time to get people out of the way, because I mean, we don't have problems, but.
If you see the animals going for the hills, go for the hills.
Yeah, so that's okay, so we can have a plan on paper, all good, because we have visitors. Is there a location-based warning system?
Well, we are.
Like pinging phones?
We are.
Okay, and that, that'll hit people's phone.
They were doing the we's, that, that was done.
They did it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got it.
I didn't get anything.
Really?
I was, I was left out. Okay.
Just go to see the website, you can fill out, sign up for everything.
I have the lowest house out of any of you guys. I'm like eight feet above sea level.
Although we figured you were a goner.
You know, you know, one thing, one thing also is that, should it, these waves will run up the creek soon.
Oh, yeah.
And so Cross Creek, the house that we worked on during the rain up there on Cross Creek Lake, the lowest, lowest point in there, lowest house in there?
Well, this was, this was a good exercise.
For sure.
It was.
For sure.
Anyway, Sarah's person.
Really?
When I was in Ventura County, we have quite a few, but they were all, you know, distance source, and we just had a lot of, you know, damage to the ports in Ventura County.
The Alaskan quake, I, I actually pulled it up to remember that, destroyed.
What year?
Destroyed, was it sixty-four? Sixty-two or sixty-four, that destroyed, destroyed the harbor in LA. It just, it tore marinas where they were attached to the land, tore them off, and they were floating, old marinas with boats in the slips, floating around in there. I don't think Wayne Del Ray was in service yet.
It lasted about five minutes.
Wow.
I heard it lasted longer than that, but yeah, it shook forever.
All right, so that was kind of receive and file-ish. Why don't we come back to public safety agency, well, because.
He's not coming.
Chris isn't coming, but he said.
Yeah, he said he was coming back.
Oh, he said he's coming back, I listened.
I didn't hear him say anything, I didn't hear him say anything.
Did he say?
Yeah, he said he's gonna come back, but. So we, if he's not back, he's not back, so can we have the, can we, are we allowed?
Motion, you have motion to update the agenda?
Great, let's move five B to the end of the agenda.
Do we have a second? Consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we'll come back.
I have a lot of questions for five C, but Luis is not here.
Great.
Yeah, I thought I printed out the report. I'm sorry, I.
You, okay.
You got three.
Yep.
Is it okay if I talk too late tomorrow?
We don't have, we just do.
Luis.
I have the, I have the report here.
Yeah, I have it, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, we have our, our written report, the outreach team continues to do a great job, as you can see, with the outcomes charts. And I don't know if you heard, but we, we got our, our homeless count numbers recently. And they're looking very good, there were twenty-one individuals counted and twenty-five structures. So some of those structures and the people go together, we just don't know how many. So basically saying there's probably between twenty-five and thirty homeless individuals in Malibu, at least on that day when we did count. Because they know, the outreach team, they know the structures, they know the people, and they know most of the people are not, they, they're living in structures of some sort.
Was it in the wee hours of the morning when they did it?
Uh, what, seven AM? So some of us were walking around at six, seven, yeah. So it, it's all going really well, and we're also getting, you know, the measuring funds, I think Luis talked about that last time. And that's gonna help, because we'll have four more beds and mental health services. So I think overall, the, you know, homeless outreach is working, I mean, it's, it's chipping away, it's, it's really helping a lot.
Yeah, I have a lot of notes on that, so I'll just call Luis tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah.
Till the end, well, he's not here, so I'm, I feel comfortable telling him he's doing a good job. That's good.
It'll be a minute.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Cut it.
We all think he's doing a good job.
Just remember this moment.
It's a tough job.
Yes, and he's just, he's gotten so good at, like, knowing which agencies to pull together and strategies, you know. We, we have some tough ones that he's still dealing with, but, you know, we have to follow the law, we can't, you know, just freak muff and chip them off.
I thought I had it all memorized, but he knows even more than I do.
So that's good.
Do you think there would be any chance of getting Gabriel here?
To come?
Different Gabriel.
Sure.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Just a, it's been a long time since he's come out, I just wanna kind of get the vibe out there, what he's seeing.
Yeah, I think that's him. He probably loved that.
I see him around all the time, you know, on this thing. Anybody have anything else? Okay, let's move on to uh, front license plates.
Tesla?
Yeah.
The luxury car tax.
Yeah, so our outreach enforcement team continues to be out there in force. I have any questions or comments or concerns, I mean.
I do. You're done with your presentation?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm, Chair, we do have one public.
Oh, we do, wow, all right.
Thank you very much.
Ryan?
The program is two contractors, actually, that you have an independent billing contractor, which you've not reviewed. That's Turbo Data Systems, which is on its eighth extension. That this is going on eleven years, that this thing's gone, I guess, out for bid. And this was a much smaller program than thousands and thousands of tickets that it is today when it was initiated. And so, you're just like, I, I get phone calls from some of my clients who say, how did I, I got a two thousand dollar electric bill? And I go, what's your billing plan? Because nothing's really changed. And, you know, they have an all-electric kitchen. And that's what did it, you know, like, I was like, well, jeez, they wouldn't have bought all those ovens and stoves if they'd known that this was gonna happen to them. So my point is, you started with covered six on a thirty-day contract, it was priced high, because it was a thirty-day contract. And now it's, you're just kicking the can down the road, and you're like, yeah, great. So the same thing is happening with Turbo Data Systems, is they were set up an account, and I think these little readers that I think are being used by the guys in the field, actually, I think are being leased or belong to them. And we've upgraded and bought those over the years to be much faster and easier, which is great. But the price of processing each ticket is over a hundred grand for this program now. And they're mailing out the notices. And the question is really, for the quantity that you've got going now, are there any other facilities, or should we be getting a better rate? And I think it would be smart for the city and/or the staff to figure out, because there's other cities that use automated ticketing, like, think of Beverly Hills, for instance, and probably right up there, probably West Hollywood, maybe Burbank, Glendale, Pasadena. So what's the price per ticket for, you want two thousand tickets a month, or fifteen hundred tickets a month, or whatever it is? Is, are we maximizing our effectiveness here? And if we'd had a city treasurer, if we had finance director that didn't keep changing all the time and becoming temporary city manager, stuff like that, maybe I wouldn't be here speaking about this, because, you know, money does matter. And it, you know, and you could maybe have six of these covered six folks if, if you just got a better deal with covered six. For a long-term contract, the rate, of course, would have been better. They'd gone in for a five- or six-month contract from the get-go, the numbers probably would have been lower. So it's time to think about Turbo Data Systems, is, are you on the right plan? Are we getting the right deal, and should it go out for rebid? Because it's a service contract, so to speak, and it's gone on eight amendments, I think we're going on nine if we do anything else. And the city has a two-year service limit for contracts such as this, and why the council's not paying attention to that, I don't know. You're asked to review the program, and this is a very interesting component to it, so thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
I conclude speakers, it's very the same.
Thank you. That's not something that we've ever touched on, right? Though with the readers themselves, or the, the credit card processing, or, or anything like that, that's just, that's Laz, and that's gonna be.
It's not, well, with that, that's Turbo, with Turbo Data, that, you know, we weren't involved with that contract, you know, we just kind of took over a year ago. So I don't know the whole history on if it's gone out to bid again. I know for myself, with homeless services contracts, every so many years, we do open it up again, like, because that's just our best practice with new laws contract, with Turbo Data. Yeah, I'll have to find out, because I think it is appropriate. If we haven't done a full bid process in a long time, it's probably appropriate to do it, just to, just to make sure. Turbo Data's been great, and the services have been great, but it's still always a good idea to, probably just let vendors know that we're watching, you know, we're looking all the time, you know, that you need to do that every so often.
Now, are they only with Laz, or are they with the VLPs?
They're not associated with Laz at all.
Oh.
All this is separated, you really don't want to build in any incentives for any group to, to, like, make, make money on this. And just, you know, with Turbo Data, we don't have, we don't pay them directly. What happens is they process the tickets, and then they issue us the balance. They take out their share that was, whatever the negotiated share is, I go back and look at that. And then we just get a check.
When?
Every month.
At the end of the month?
Approximately, yeah, it's month to month.
Holding a lot of dough for a long time.
Well, it goes for a month, it's month to month, I mean, they have to.
Yeah, it's how they're gonna make their money, on the interest. All right. Yeah, it would be something that is not for us to look at, but city council, finance subcommittee or something, it's something I would have never thought of, so thank you.
They handle, they handle VLPs and Laz's tickets as well?
Yeah, they both have Turbo Data.
That's what I thought. You said they were separate, but, they're just a separate company.
Turbo Data is a separate contract from Laz.
Okay, so, but does Turbo Data do one con, one con, like, one for Laz and one for the VLP?
No, it's with Malibu, it's a contract with Malibu, yeah.
I got something.
Hit it.
Okay. So, I'm gonna go back to the minutes of September fourth, twenty twenty-four, all right? Commissioner Merrick wants to have a parking app developed that states where people can get information about where to park. You guys have heard me say this almost every meeting. When can we get this on the agenda where we can actually do this? Because I, you know, I've talked to Mr. Russo here multiple times, and people don't know where to park. And, and if we can do a QR code on a sign saying, you know, here's your, you know, like, oh, open up your phone, here's where we can park in the city of Malibu, here's where we can park on Point Two. So then we're not just ticketing, because we're never gonna ticket our way out of there. And then it did go up some little signs, but nobody reads those signs, because the print is so small. You know, the state did that, not the city. But I think the city should have an app, or maybe not even an app, just a QR code that goes to Google Maps, and then there's green streets that, where you can park, and there's red streets where you can't, it's very simple, I think. So anyhow, so you know I've talked about this.
Yeah, no, I, I'm sorry, I mean, I, I hate to say that it's partly, it's a little bit of snapping capacity to be able to do that, and the fact that our work is at the council direction. So the council would need to direct us to do that. So how you do it is then if the commission wants to agendize it as something that you make a recommendation to the city council to direct staff to do that, they would have to look at their strategic plan, decide if they want to make staff do that.
But why isn't it underneath our parking, which is already, I mean, that's the thing, like, because when I've talked about this when I was on Public Works, they were, oh, you don't do parking. Okay, we don't do parking at Public Works, now we're on public safety, and we get, we talk about parking every month, so.
We, can we make a strict recommendation, can he make a motion, he make a recommendation to council?
A question, if we, we were talking about, like, parking enforcement, even though it was an agendized specifically as that, can they make?
Sure, we do it in public comment, or excuse me, we do in commissioners' comments.
This was only regarding the last parking enforcement team, so I would recommend bringing it back at a future date, just to allow the public.
September, to talk about creating a parking app, so then you can.
A parking app?
It doesn't have to be an app, it can be.
I mean, it doesn't have to be.
A mechanism by which to.
By which they can just know where they can park, okay? Because I've heard the rangers, and, and he, you would agree, right? A lot of people are like, where do I park, and you try to tell them.
Big question, yeah, a lot of visitors.
In, in favor of moving this along quickly, because he's completely right. So we make recommendations and motions in commissioners' comments. We've done that before, we've made recommendations there.
Yeah, but in commissioners' comments, that sounds like the commission making a recommendation.
No, but we could make a motion.
To agendize.
Well, yeah, but we're, we're agendizing, bring it back, we already know what we want to do, so I'm trying to.
It would have to be on the agenda.
Yes, but on our agenda, before I can go to the council? I don't think so.
Well, I think to be able to discuss the idea and make a right.
I'm okay with it, but for, obviously, almost a year we've talked about it.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure.
I want to get, I really, you know, I think we should get it done, I'm glad to count that.
Yeah, okay, Cindy is confirming, I mean, of course, I know, it's government, I apologize.
So we have to bring it back here before we can take it to there?
To make, like, commission.
We have two agendas, two agendas.
To have the commission make a recommendation to the council, it has to be an agendized.
agendas, a motion.
To recommend.
I mean, like, you could have it as a school program, like, have some kid develop it at Malibu High. Get a little scholarship or something, I mean, yeah, it's not, this is very basic, I mean.
But, but the thing, it does take staff time, it's.
I get it, I get it.
Right, okay, so that's why it comes to the council to decide if they want to divert some staff time to that as opposed to something else.
I think you can sell advertising on it.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, and trust me, it's been something that's like, it's on the list, we just haven't been able to get to it. But if the council wants to prioritize, then we had it done.
So are you going, is, I was just gonna.
You want to bring it back for September, we can, we can bring it back for September, so you can make a formal recommendation.
Yes, just a bare bones, just a bare bones, like, spend this little time on that.
It's in the future.
Sure.
Yeah, that's true.
This is all we need to do, like a paragraph, and yeah, like.
Paragraph, take a vote and send it out.
One sentence, don't even hit me with a paragraph.
Right, but just enough so that people know what you're gonna talk about, and you can make a recommendation.
Okay, cut. I told you he would be back, I believe in him.
He, he follows, he listens to them.
Can you talk about it, Mr. Soderbergh?
Wait, we, we, we're not ready for him yet.
Oh, I'm not here, we're.
Can we, can we move on? See if the next.
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna move to five B. Sorry, yeah, monthly, public safety agency monthly.
Perfect timing.
We're you.
Perfect timing.
It is, yeah, but I have to, I have to announce.
Oh, sorry, I took this.
All right, government.
Sorry, I know.
Government.
Announce it, sir.
And after presentation, we do have one slip.
Wonderful, don't ask me questions until. We have fun here.
Is that after this tsunami, or?
I'll go first, yeah.
I'll go first.
Yeah.
Uh, well, hello, everybody. Just wanna bring you up to date on some of the things we're doing. We still have a car issue, and that's kind of really, uh, limiting our ability to get a lot of our team out. We're up to 22 members, and we actually have a new person that's going through the training process, but you know, we've been down to one car effectively, uh, our other car, um, should be back at the end of next week, is what I was told today. So we'll see what happens. The bailment agreement for the new cars, I think, is gonna be brought up at, for approval at city council on Monday. So that's exciting news, I don't know how quickly we can get them over to Fleet, but that'll be kind of the next step. I understand Sergeant Armstrong to make you back. So he's actually a pretty good facilitator with that. I think we have, uh, kind of our newest car coming, I think it was, have you heard anything about that? I think it's supposed to be coming maybe next week, being delivered from Ford, so we're gonna have three new cars. We gotta get that one outfitted and all that, so. Uh, but yeah, it's been challenging for us, because we're trying to, you know, get everybody to utilize one car, and not all the time, we have schedules that line out before that. But, uh, you know, we've been pretty busy with that nonetheless, it seems like every day we're out, you know, something's going on. The, uh, we had actually a meeting, a traffic meeting this week, uh, involving Lost Hills Traffic, Luis, myself, uh, the Laz people, um, and we just kind of went over, you know, the kind of the state of parking enforcement, what we're seeing, some of the new laws, uh, some things that we want to do with, uh, you know, incorporate into the ticket writing systems. So it was a pretty productive meeting, we do that periodically, just to kind of get everybody on the same page, because, you know, we issue the citations, Laz issue citations, and then, you know, if they get contested, they go to the station, uh, for review, and they make determinations based on, uh, what they're seeing with the ticket, and what the individual is, um, contesting exactly, so. We do have those meetings periodically, so it was a, it was a good meeting. We went to, uh, we had National Night Out yesterday, and, uh, this, we we went with the station, and this, this year it was in Calabasas. So it was a good meeting, community comes out, um, and, uh, you know, gets to talk to the deputies ourselves. We really try to use it as a recruiting tool. That's kind of a, one of our big challenges, recruiting new members, you know, trying to convince people that, hey, you know, this is such a great thing, you know, come do it for free. And, uh, it's, you know, it's always a challenge, but look, it's a great program, and, uh, so we, you know, we get them when we can, uh, when we can get them. So, but, uh, like I said, we have one new recruit that we're, is in the process of training. So that was going on. In terms of, um, you know, the team overall, I think that, you know, everybody's doing a great job out there, like I said, you know, we're trying to get a car out there almost every single day. You know, so summer's been very busy, you know, especially on the weekends, obviously, we're getting a lot of, uh, a lot of real, um, I think we're seeing some pretty big crowds at the beaches. A lot of times, we get involved in the traffic control down at Westward, down at Zuma, um, you know, and then, uh, you know, trying to respond to traffic collisions, all the other things that we do. One thing that's kind of interesting, we're dealing with, uh, I don't know if you guys have heard about, there's kind of a little bit of a mountain lion issue going on on Point Dune. You know, it's kind of got everybody freaked out, I I found out, uh, a couple of days ago, that I guess it chased, uh, one of the residents up on their property, chased them all from their backyard all the way up to their house. Um, it's an uncollared female, so I've been working with, um, uh, fish and wildlife on that, uh, but it's, you know, obviously got the residents concerned, so. We're kind of looking for that, it's kind of getting a little bit more, um, I guess, bold in terms that we're seeing it more kind of in early evening hours, we used to just see it, um, you know, kind of late at night, and that's kind of like on Wildlife, Burn Hill, uh, Zumares, it's been seen, it killed some sheep up off Zumares, uh, north of PCH, so it's it's active. So dealing with that a little bit, but, uh, that's pretty much all that I have, if you guys have any questions, let me know.
Well, we're gonna take another comment before we go back to your question.
Okay. Yep.
My turn. Uh, so that was a, uh, call of a burglary in progress on Malibu Road. We got there, there was, uh, nine individuals, two of whom are juvenile.
Wow.
Seven of them were barely adults, they were down on the beach, and they decided to go into a home that was under construction on Malibu Road. As of now, we're still out there investigating, so I don't have the conclusion of that event, but that's what that was.
Two, three block?
Twenty-four thousand block.
Okay.
Of Malibu Road. Um, so now, back to my report. On July 19th, uh, one of the patrol units in Malibu was using the new license plate reader camera system, and, uh, picked up a stolen truck, and he was able to locate that truck near Crowell Canyon, and got behind it, which turned into a pursuit, uh, the pursuit got canceled after a short time period. Uh, a CHP unit on PCH near Pacific Palisades was able to pick up that vehicle, and went in pursuit of it down into downtown L.A. area. Uh, they canceled their pursuit, and a short time later, a, uh, LAPD unit noticed this truck, which was on rims at this point. Uh, went in pursuit of it in the downtown area, and it was on the local news on, uh, helicopter footage. I sent Cynthia the link, do we have TV available, or is it too much to set up?
Don't have it readily available, but I can send it to the county.
Alright, well, Noah's on here, well.
It was sparkly.
City Council will play it, so, but, uh, LAPD was able to pick that truck and then take that suspect into custody, so. It all started.
Started here.
It all started here in Malibu, so.
With our cameras.
Yes.
There you go.
Next up, I have the month of July crime statistics. Uh, year to date, or I'm sorry, in the month of July, there was 27 Part 1 crimes reported, that brings our total to 149. Year to date, and this compares with 260 from the same time last year, and that's a uh, 42.7% decrease year over year, and a five-year change is 32% decrease, so. Numbers are steadily going down in the right direction, month over month. Our beach team, this is the final month of beach team, as we head to Labor Day, September 1st, so our beach team is out there. Uh, we heard some, um, complaints about Surf Rider Beach, about some, uh, criminal activity going on there, so. Our beach team has been trolling there every weekend, uh, and for the past two weeks. And we have made two arrests there at Surf Rider Beach, we've issued alcohol on the beach citations, smoking on the beach, and dogs on the beach. So the lifeguards, we've contacted them, and they have seen a marked, uh, change in behavior of the individuals there. So they're very happy, and we're making a difference out there. One of the arrests that we made was for an assault with a deadly weapon, it was one of the locals there. Um, he got into an argument with another local there, and, uh, assaulted him with a deadly weapon. Uh, his truck was towed out of there, and he's still in custody at this point, so. Apparently, he's one of the main instigators at the location, so he's gone, so.
Well, she grabbed who it is.
No, we know who. There's a list of suspects. Uh, MTA is now making all the stops along PCH in the burn area, uh, as of a few weeks ago. So there will be, uh, more pedestrian traffic in the area, because they're hitting all the stops now, um, as safety permits due to construction. Uh, speaking of PCH safety, we collaborated with the city and Highway Patrol to make a safety video. Uh, should be airing soon, I think, it's in the final edits and final approval, so look for that. We had Sergeant Arons, our traffic sergeant, he was the main star, along with Officer Krista Nolan from the Highway Patrol, and the city, um, video production unit, uh, filmed it, Travis Parker and Matt Meyerhoff were behind it, so. Look for that, coming out soon. Finally, uh, we have Deputy Carlos Vindel, who's going to Malibu's new School Resource Officer. He started this week, uh, I think school starts next week or the week after.
Like 21st.
Yeah, so he will be there full-time, uh, he'll be coming to city council on Monday to introduce himself, and so we're happy to have him. And finally, uh, thank you, Alexis, for acknowledging the arson explosive detectives. I worked with one of them, Joshua Kelly Eklund, about 10 years ago, so it's a little, little home for me. And then Detective Osborne, his funeral was yesterday, uh, he was seven months from retirement.
Wow.
And, uh, Victor Lemus is next week, I think, so, but thank you for mentioning that.
It was a grenade that they didn't know.
Yeah, detonated. I know it was missing, I mean, I don't want to assume, but it's probably in pieces, so, you know. And that is all I have.
Was there a, uh, I mean, I I saw activity.
We got a deal.
Thank you, Ryan.
We do a public.
We have one speaker slip for this.
Well, I was only on this group for like a dozen years, so.
I take a lot of notes from Ryan's books.
Um, Mike, I had a question about the the juvenile intervention team report, and I don't know if it's for our city or not, it says that I think they conducted some outrageous number, like 290 checks of sex offenders or something, or checks on sex offenders in our area? Do we have that many sex offenders in our area? I'm just kind of wondering.
How many? I can't hear you.
I think it was 290, it's on the last.
That's for the entire station.
The whole station area, oh, okay. Um, they don't break it down to what they do for Malibu?
I don't know, that's not my.
Okay.
Teams.
Okay, the other was, is when we first got an ALPR car back in 2000 and whatever it was, eight or nine or something like that, we realized, we were told, we are going to catch the rest of the world's problems when they happen to drive through Malibu, and this is a thing, it's somewhat of a burden. In fact, the state law, I think, was changed, that that the car rental companies can't just call the sheriff and say, hey, their credit card didn't go through, and so you see our car, you know, pull them over for us, thank you. Um, that they don't get to do that anymore, that's kind of abuse of the law enforcement system for business reasons. But that's happened before, and I, um, am glad to see that changed. I did, did see the ALPR stuff up at the fixed location cameras, up near, uh, HRL and some other places in town. And I'm wondering if that is, that's the one that's run by your department, the sheriffs? The word, the city itself is, has no deal with Flock, even though we looked into it once. So the Flock is generally the neighborhood stuff, and, um, the Big Rock neighborhood had it, I don't know if it was replaced after it burned. But I would hope that they've resumed that for their own network purposes, I don't know if anybody here knows that, whether they have or haven't. I'll be finding out from Joe in probably 20 minutes, gets that question, but, um, as to the, um, enforcement levels for for the beach team, spreading them out down Surf Rider is a good idea. We don't have valet parking for surfers in this town. Of course, we could, probably get a grant from MTA to do it, we don't have enough parking, we have congestion, people doing U-turns, looking for parking spaces. Double parking, unloading, and changing clothes at the side of the road, all this stuff is a distraction, and it would be a novel grant to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Sorry for interrupting.
No, just go for it. Um, uh, one of the officers said, was there a hit and run in Pavilion Park at one?
One, you know?
Like, a couple of days ago? A couple of days ago?
I'd have to look.
Oh, alright, I mean, there was a big turnout, and and one of the officers told someone that works for me that it was a hit and runs, an old lady. I don't know whether she got the, that was pedestrian or as a car, but, so, I just, because there's a big turnout, like, good work.
So, um, I put my cruise control on 25 miles an hour on PCH in the burn areas, and it's, I'm like the Amish horse on a buggy person. Right. So it's very interesting, I haven't seen anyone go 25, except me, being Amish, horse on a buggy.
I'd go 25, I do.
Yeah, yeah.
Kelly's killing it down there.
That's why we made that safety video.
Oh, that's, yeah, I loved it, and is, so, is it, because in France, you get a ticket if you're going speed limit on the fast lane, right? And I think in Arizona, you get tickets all the time for everything, but, um, but it's okay to take the fast lane for the horse on a buggy speed or not?
If you're going the posted speed limit, you're fine.
It's mean, I I wouldn't do it, it's just so tempting.
Come on.
I I wouldn't.
Are you saying you drive over time?
So I'm saying left lanes for passing.
So when, when can we, when, when can they expect to get more than one car for 22 VOPs?
It's the bailment agreement.
Is that third car, you say it's coming from Fleet, or it's coming from them?
No, so the third car is coming from Ford, so it's a built car, and it was supposed to ship, I think, this week. So we'll receive it here, maybe next week.
But then you have a month of outfitting, and or two months, and.
Correct.
And then the bailment after that.
Then the bailment, but but I will tell you that now that Sergeant Armstrong, because he was out for a bit, he's really good at facilitating those bailments, so.
Sooner the better.
So how do we get to a point where you have too many cars, rather than not enough?
Trying to get there.
The, him, the VOPs not having enough vehicles is is a failure, honestly, I mean, it's a failure, I mean, I'll take that as a failure here.
Yeah, I mean, you can't, you know, assign a lane to it, it's just, a lot of times, it's just circumstances, like, we had one of, you know, I was driving the car. We had one TC'd in totals on PCH up by the Tranquus Bridge, right? Some guy was involved in a road rage incident, he lost control of his car, started crashing into cars, one of which was mine, right? Took the car out, and it was just gone. So, you know, we've had mechanical issues, you know, it has to go to, you know, there's a little bit of a production that happens, like, the one car that we have that's at Ford right now, getting repaired. I mean, that's been down since the beginning of July, right, because it's just a process to get it repaired. So, you know, I think, I mean, I don't, you know, and Guy will attest to this, but I don't think we've ever had this time where we've, a period where we've had every car that we're supposed to have online, but we're getting there. I have a lot of confidence that, you know, when these two, when the city council approves this on Monday, then it's gonna be scheduling the trip to Fleet, Fleet's gonna put on the logos, the radios, and we'll get it back, and we'll be ready to go with those. So I'm hoping we can get that, you know, sometime in September, get those two cars, right? Because because one thing about it is the process now, we kind of have it down, it's just really waiting for the signatures and, you know, because the city did an amazing job this time, turning around not only the vehicles, but also the outfitting of the vehicles. Then it's just kind of the waiting process, as the bailment kind of runs through the different sheriff's departments, you know, uh, signatures. Like, we don't deal with board of supervisors anymore.
But you can only order the cars once a year, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But you can only order one car once a year?
Well, there's just a period of time, a short period of time, where you can actually put the order in.
Okay, so how do we, how do we make sure that you're not down?
Well, we're working on getting to the point where we're gonna be putting in the car before we need it, because we know, so we can project out probably mileage-wise, that car's gonna be down, so.
Right.
Mark and I talked about this, we need to get onto a schedule.
Alright.
But thank you for asking.
Have you tried to get all 22 of you in one car?
You can do it all the time, you have to do it all the time.
I'd like to see that video, I'd like to see that video, you guys.
Yeah, it's like, it's like, it's like the golf carts on Point Dune, yeah.
Uh, does anybody have anything else for Mark?
Oh, not more.
Okay.
Actually, I did, I have, I want to say for Mark, what do you, well, actually, both of you, what are you seeing out on the point as far as the motorcycles? Now, the supposed electric bikes that are more like motorcycles.
The e-motocycles?
Yeah.
They're out there, but we're not gonna chase a kid on an electric motorcycle, so. If we get them to stop, and they stop, we'll enforce the law, they. They, unfortunately, sometimes they run, and we're not going to endanger them or the public by chasing them, so.
Do they know that?
I hope they, they understand the consequences of their actions.
She's going to be in the Pavilion Parking Lots.
And it's not just a problem here in Malibu, it's a problem in all the other cities.
But they've been posting a lot of stuff on social media that, that they've been cracking down on other neighborhoods.
Wesley Gillie, the picture of a tow truck with several of them on the back, and that is some part over there.
The picture with the two on the front bed?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I stopped those kids, so.
Why weren't you in the picture?
Officer Buzzkill.
Somebody can't even mention the most stuff.
No, I, you know, I wouldn't necessarily care, except that they're just, they're going to hurt themselves.
Or someone else.
Or someone else, yeah, because they're, I mean...
So basically, if you want to tell people who ask you if they have pedals for pedal assist, those are legal. If they do not have pedals, and it's just a basically a throttle, it's an electric motorcycle, it's, you need a motorcycle license, registration, insurance, all the safety equipment, turn signals, brake lights, just like a regular motorcycle, so that, that's the difference.
I saw the greatest wheelie I've ever seen in a Zuma parking lot. Right, actually out, he actually went around to turn and kept...
Oh, no, they're, that's what they do, they're weird kids.
I have a question. Were charges ever filed on the senior prank that was done?
Yes.
Charges were filed.
Two, two suspects have felony.
Oh, wow.
Okay, charges, yes. Okay.
Because of the value of the damage?
Correct. Felony vandalism, it's good to know.
Locals?
Under 18 or over 18.
I believe they're adults, yeah.
So they'd already graduated, okay.
No, it was before, before graduation it happened.
No, no, I know that, but they weren't, it wasn't great by students, they were 18, it...
Yeah, they were, they were students, they were seniors, yeah. Oh, I was 18.
Oh, it's high school.
That got held back.
Your brother and I. You go ahead and ask.
Well, not certain. What is the protocol for that?
I, I would ask you not to engage with, with the, but I can, I can comment on, on that. As far as a member of the public taking photos of people in public and filming their license plates, it's perfectly legal, and it's like, it's annoying, but at the end of the day, like, constitutionally protected activity, like, you got to take the bad with the good, so, because it's one of those things.
As long as there's no invasion of privacy going beyond...
You have no expectation of privacy once you step into the public, so it's just the way it is. Anything else? All right, let's adjourn.
Thank you.
Chair, or, oh, in the memory of the...
Would you adjourn us?
Thank you, everyone, for being here. Today, we adjourn in the memory of really three brilliant LASD detectives, Detective Joshua Kelly Eklund, Detective Victor Lemus, and Detective William Osborne.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you so much for coming, everyone.
Was it your house?
I heard you rolled up.
Nice chat.
Ken was like, "Who's this guy?"
Was it, who's the guy at your house?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't there.
I was with Terry.
Yeah, I know. That was great, actually, you guys, she was really happy to meet you.